Under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone wish to speak on something non-competitive? Seeing no one, I will move on. Reports from school committee members, does anyone have anything they wish to talk about tonight? And I will continue to move on, and I'll go to superintendent, put superintendent's report.
Welcome. Thank you Chairman Young, members of the school committee. Tonight, I have quite a few items on my report. Before I get into it, I wanted to make sure I announced formally that free lunch is here to stay for the state of Massachusetts and specifically here in Middleborough. This was initiative was started during COVID when breakfast and lunch started being funded by the federal government. The state of Massachusetts has now assumed that budgetary responsibility to continue that program. So all school breakfast, all school lunch will be will be free for every student this year and hopefully going forward. There will still be the availability to purchase à la carte items, and that will be for a fee. I've asked the Director of Food Service to come this September to present out on some of the more, you know, specifics about the items in the cafeteria. But I thought I would start off tonight by celebrating free lunch for all. Next, I wanted to briefly touch on some of the summer initiatives. It's been a very busy summer here in Middleborough. And I will have the the directors come and talk specifically about some of these programs, and some members are here tonight as well. We ultimately split those presentations. You'll be hearing this fall about Summer Splash, which was for students in grades K through eight. Specifically, actually, a school committee member, Chris Benson, reached out to me and wanted to make sure that I passed on the message that the kickoff to K portion of Summer Splash, which is a classroom for students, this year it was actually at the MECC, so that students could acclimate to kindergarten in their space. He thought it was very successful. The reviews were very positive, and I wanted to make sure I pass that on, really along with the rest of the Summer Splash program. You'll hear about extended school year from Director Healy later this this, as we get into the school year. You'll hear from Director Sylvia about athletics programs. If you're on Twitter, you've been or I don't know if it's called Twitter anymore, but you've heard all about the sports programs. They've been very well attended, and certainly very high rates of participation. There was also a kindergarten social at Camp Yumikis that school committee member Benson wanted me to bring up, too. He thought it was really successful, a fun event to attend. And I assured him that events like this are here to stay. They'll continue. These are the pieces that are so important to have students cultivate that sense of belonging and feel that they're connected in their community. Tonight, you're going to be hearing from the Staff Strong program. That's our mentoring and induction program. And you're going to be hearing about Start Strong for our incoming ninth graders. And just before we get to that, I thought I would briefly just highlight the administrative retreat that took place just last week on August 7th, 8th, and 10th. This is a three-day process for the entire administrative team, and what we spent the majority of that time doing was building the five-year strategic plan, the strategy for continuous district improvement. I'll have that for presentation next meeting. This agenda was getting a little full, so I split that. I'll bring it and explain it in depth. I'm very proud to tell you that that's the product of a lot of input, not just from administration, but from the entry plan processes undertaken by by Dr. Mark Alitis and me, including input from really stakeholders all across our district and community. So I'll be talking more about that next meeting. But one of the things we did as an administrative team was that we reflected over the last school year. And I think it's so important to do that and talk about not just ways to grow, but celebrate the pieces that were successful. And I celebrated with them some of the very impressive curriculum work that happened over the last year involving curriculum review and creating curriculum cycles and renewal. And it's taken a very forefront position in our work here in the district. And it's it's really that that curriculum work that drives instruction that leads to student performance. We also talked about the creation of a Student Services Department and the design of a comprehensive mental health system that really sets us apart from other school districts. Director Avitable, who's part of who is the leader of the Student Services Department, has been influential in bringing on new initiatives like Panorama, but specifically trying to quantify social and emotional learning and make it accessible as we navigate our way through education. We also celebrated the revision of the elementary report cards to embrace not just social emotional learning, but also readiness skills, so that when we're looking at our youngest learners, we are assessing them on measures that are meaningful to them. We celebrated special education and Director Healy. There was a, you know, recent endorsement by the BSCA on on a decision that really fortifies that the Special Education Department continues to make decisions in the best interest of children. And I think that that's something that's something worth celebrating this year as well. And then finally, actually, not finally, we created a new system of media, media management and communication through Director Siciliano. And you've heard about some of those communication guides over the last year, new for us here in in Middleborough, but I think a system that's been needed and certainly will continue to to implement and improve upon our process. And then finally, I wanted to really take note and celebrate our commitment to inclusive practices for all. The district has really gone out of its way to start articulating the need to cultivate practices through procedures, through our everyday practice, through our libraries, where all students see themselves and all students feel as though they belong. And those positions have been supported. They've been supported by MAS. They've been supported by DESE, and most recently at the federal court level. So as a team, we we celebrated our victories this year. We reflected on ways that we're going to continue to grow because there are always places to grow. And we look forward to the coming year. So with that, I would like to call up Paul Branigan, Principal of Middleborough High School. He's going to talk to us about, and actually, you'll, I don't know if you have a slide deck, but you'll want to change that now. He's going to talk to us about our ninth grade program. And I have to tell you, I had the privilege of coming. The this room was decorated and adorned with streamers and decorations, and there were 280 orientation leaders for 140 incoming ninth graders. It sounded a lot like a block party, but it was filled with excitement and joy, and it was a pleasure and an honor to get to see it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Branigan.
Hi, Mrs. Lyons. Thank you very much, and good evening to the members of school committee. I would like to take an opportunity and invite the coordinators of Start Strong 2023, Sarah McCullough and Kira Dean, to come on over. As they're coming up, then what's important to note about Start Strong is, as Mrs. Lyons had said, that we just finished our two days of Start Strong welcoming the class of 2027. It is an entire student-led program, so every ounce of the programming to the curriculum, to the activities, it is all things that are created by students based upon what they really felt was really important for students to be able to know coming into the high school. So what stories do they want to tell? And what are the most important things they need to know? And the two people on either side of me, I had the really great fortune of working with the two of them throughout since really late spring of of really putting together the program. So when we talk about student-driven and student-led, that it is really led by the two of them. So they were identified as the coordinators of Start Strong, and they assembled the entire OL staff, what we call the OL staff, the orientation leaders, planned the entire two days. And I thought it would be important for them to share about the highlights of what Start Strong 2023 was all about. So introducing Kira Dean and Sarah McCullough.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Kira Dean. I'm one of the Start Strong coordinators this year. So what Sarah and I kind of did was recreate a program for the incoming ninth graders. And we kind of had a lot of activities and fun things to get them introduced to our high school. It was to get some of the first day jitters out and to get them to see what our high school culture is really about. I had a lot of fun coordinating this with Sarah, and we had a really great time. So now I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to have some more notes on that.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah McCombe. I was the other coordinator for Start Strong. And again, this was a really amazing program to run. I think one of the the best parts about it was when the freshmen came in, you know, they had all of these older kids, you know, these sophomores, juniors, seniors, dancing and running around screaming and yelling. And they're like, what the heck is going on? And they kind of just stood there, and they didn't really like it. But as the day went on, as, you know, the hours went by, they started to get more involved. We walked around, we saw them, you know, laughing and smiling, talking, everybody getting involved. They started singing and dancing, too. And by the end, when we called everybody back for their final meeting, they got up with the rest of us. They danced, and they acted just like all of us do in the high school. So I feel like they got a lot of this program, and they will be ready to join our amazing Middleborough High School. So, thank you.
What was your favorite part about your role in this program? You were both leaders. I watched you, you know, kind of go through the agenda. But what was your favorite part as you engaged with this process?
So my favorite part of this whole process was seeing it all come together after all the hard hours of work, seeing everyone really do their jobs correctly and make the most of it.
I think my favorite part was seeing, you know, the seniors who kind of led a lot of the freshmen around, I think, walking around and just seeing them interact with the freshmen was the best part, because they were just all in there together. There wasn't a divide between grades. There wasn't, there was no divide. They were in there together. They were already part of the family. And so when they walked these doors on August 30th, they're going to be ready.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm always struck by the way Middleborough High School, you know, maximizes the ability for students to self-manage and self-govern. So please continue to do that. And thank you for your help over the last two days. Great. With that, I will turn to Staff Strong. And Dr. Mark Alitis had a conflict this evening. And with that, I will invite up to the table Kate Hietu and Colleen Randall, two of not just our veteran educators here in the district, but as mentor coordinators, these are two teachers that other teachers look to in a leadership role. These are people that new teachers go to for advice. These are people that are wonderful liaisons for, you know, questions that relate to the union, questions that relate to administration, how to become a new educator in our, not just our system, but in general. So with that, I welcome you both. I was able to come to this program and open it up. And I think we had about 30 new employees that we were able to welcome. But I will turn it over to you. Please let us know a little bit about the program, and we'll go from there.
Good evening, Superintendent Lyons, Chairman Young, and the school committee members. I'm Kate Hietu. I am the secondary mentor program coordinator.
And I'm Colleen Randall, and I'm the elementary program coordinator. And tonight, we are looking forward to sharing with you some information about Staff Strong and sharing some of the highlights. So Staff Strong, as you had shared with everybody, Mrs. Lyons, is our district orientation program for the newly hired educators. And this year, Staff Strong was two full days of orientation and training. And we were very lucky to be here at the high school. We did share a day with the incoming Start Strong, so it was a very exciting day.
Both of our days were filled with several presentations. The new hires were introduced to their mentors, and our mentors are experienced educators and district staff that are trained to work with our new educators, to help them become acclimated to Middleborough and learn how to give information and teach our students. We welcomed 35 new staff members this year, ranging from elementary and secondary educators, special education teachers, counselors, and administrators. Each one is matched with a mentor, and there were about 25 to 30 mentors that attended the training this week. We felt like we were really lucky to have such a large group and to be able to work together to build their community.
And as you can see from our agenda on day one and on day two, we had many presentations for the staff to go to. And we would just like to recognize some of those presentation presenters. So first, we'd like to say thank you to Andy Dizel and our school resource officers. We were able to have them come down and give a presentation about emergency response and school safety. And then we welcomed Sean Siciliano and Katie Gudine. They came and shared information about the district software and the applications. And it was very nice that every educator that was joining the team was now given their laptop and their ID badge, so they were like, ready to roll off and get started. And the truth is, we couldn't have done it without the tech department. Those friends came down and helped everybody get logged in and connected, and they're a great team. So I just want to give a shout out to all the tech department that came down to help us out.
It was great. In addition, we had Kevin Avitable and Jen Healy presenting on special education and social emotional learning. Our principals and assistant principals came to welcome our new staff members. And we had lunch provided both days. We were fortunate to have lunch from Davela's Catering, Central Cafe, and the main ingredient.
I'm just going to share some pictures of our highlights. One of the other highlights that we had is that each one of our new educators was given a gift bag. It had some swag in it, the official Middleborough water bottle that everyone needs to refill, and, you know, information, a little book, some other swag in there to get them started with the year. So that was wonderful.
Lastly, we would like to thank Paul Branigan, the MHS office staff, and the custodians here for all of their support over the two days. We felt very comfortable. We had everything we needed. And if we didn't have something, we were able to ask, and it was provided right away. It was an amazing two days. We had a great time meeting the new educators, working with our mentors, and building the program. We're very excited for the upcoming school year.
And we just want to say thank you for having us here tonight. And it was definitely our pleasure to come and share the success of Staff Strong.
Thank you, ladies. Mrs. Hietu and Mrs. Randall are being very gracious and humble, but they have been a huge factor in, you know, really shaping this program, which has been part of a human resources initiative. When you're onboarding new staff, it's not different from welcoming ninth graders into a new high school. There is a lot of jitters that go along with not just either becoming a teacher for the first time or coming into our system for the first time. And these two professionals have helped shape meaningful learning experiences to maximize those two days. They've surveyed staff to make sure the program is long enough, not too short, not too long, write down, I heard Mrs. Randall that morning, you know, is this room a comfortable temperature? Every detail has has truly been vetted by these two educators. And we're very lucky and very fortunate. And thank you both very, very much. With that, any other questions? New staff, do you have a sense of what the breakdown was between like brand-new teachers versus transfers in or new people to Middleborough?
I would say we probably had maybe five or six new to Middleborough, and then the rest were new educators.
Yes. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, we will turn to Principal Heather Tucker. I'll ask you to come up to the table. Our next item is to talk about the new John T. Nichols Middle School schedule. I see, I think Ms. Cavoni, is Ms. Cavoni coming with you? And and Mr. Carroll, both assistant principals, Mr. Carroll and Ms. Cavoni, and then also Mrs. Tucker, will walk us through this new schedule. The district sat with the union leadership this week, and we have had very good support from from the union leadership and also the staff within the building. I think this was a desired change. And this team worked at really light speed in order to turn this around. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, three, and please, you know, let us know about this new schedule and everything that goes along with it.
Thank you so much. I'm Heather Tucker. I'm principal of the Nichols. And so what we've done is we have created a new Nichols schedule. With the new schedule, we had some must-have considerations that we really needed to think about when creating our schedule. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has set time on learning minutes that we must adhere to for compliance. So when we're thinking about things such as even transition time in the hallway, how much time we have students in the building, we have to make sure that we still meet all of those times. Some other factors we needed to think about is we needed three 30-minute lunch blocks, as the teachers have 30-minute lunch periods, which we have three. So lunch essentially is an hour and a half every day in the cafeteria. Set, we put three teams in the cafeteria, three clusters in the cafeteria at once. So we have three lunches that we need to serve. Teachers need a minimum of 45 minutes of planning per day. Teachers cannot teach more than five blocks a day. Something else we need to consider is our arrival to school. We have a 20-minute length of homeroom because we have some rolling buses, because the buses need to come from the high school cross Middleborough, which is a very large geographical location, and get everybody to school in time and make sure that we don't back up the buses for the elementary route. Having this 20-minute arrival time allows for breakfast, as Ms. Lyons, I talked about that there's now free breakfast for everybody. And we also needed to make sure that we have intervention blocks as part of, you know, the mass-tiered system of supports that are carved out into our schedule to make sure that we're able to provide students with some more individualized needs. Some of our schedule wants. So then there are things that we want to consider that make a difference based on teachers and just some of the building preferences. And so one of those preferences is to have what's called a rotation in the schedule. And what we mean by a rotation in the schedule is that math is not last block every single day, because sometimes that Friday period can be quite a bit. So we really wanted to capitalize on the fact that some students perform better at different points in time in the day. And with a rotating schedule, we're able to do that. In the previous schedule, we had a block of time that was first thing in the morning, and we have created that intervention block to do what I call as a waterfall throughout the schedule. So it becomes dynamic versus stagnant. And it actually, we created more time for intervention. So we're actually able to do a lot more in supporting some individualized student needs. And we wanted to make sure we had some more flexibility with the music ensembles, such as orchestra and band, across our schedule.
So the way we have our schedule structured, we're going to have a five-day five-period with the long block that Ms. Tucker just spoke about. Homeroom, as we stated, will be about 20 minutes to account for the staggered bus arrivals. And the short blocks will be 65 minutes. The long blocks will be 95 minutes long, and that 55 of that will be for the content area, and then 40 minutes will be what I need, which you'll hear a little bit more about in just a moment. So what this is going to do is allow for more instruction time to be devoted to some project-based learning. That's something that's already been happening in the school, but this is going to give us a little more flexibility, more cross-curricular partnerships, and center-based learning. And right there, might not be super intuitive, but that is a snapshot of what our day would look like. And you can see how that long block sort of just rotates through. And as well as, you know, when you have, on Monday, you start your day with period one, the next day, and you're going to, that'll be the second class of the day for you. So each class is going to get a shot at at the beginning of the day, and everybody's going to have a chance to end the day. So that'll help a lot for the teachers, I believe.
So this is a little bit more about the win block, the what I need block. The purpose is to provide students with opportunities to receive target interventions and supports to address their individualized needs, specific to learning. And some of the activities can include special education service delivery, repetitious instruction, expanded concept knowledge, and executive functioning supports. And some additional information regarding our schedule, the student schedules are being released next Monday on the 21st. We have a parent schedule meeting the next day on the 22nd Tuesday at 5:00 at the Nichols, which we invite parents to come out and kind of ask more intimate questions regarding the schedule, you know, especially for our seventh and eighth grade students who were in the building previously where this is going to be a change for them, but also those sixth grade students coming up. If they have, you know, any questions, they can come and hear more about it. And then also, the Nichols Middle School smore will be going out with additional information.
Are there any questions? Stand a little on what the plans are for, you mentioned the the arts programs with the the orchestra and band and chorus.
So those are part of the Unified Arts. So the way our Unified Arts, which is your basic specials, health, art, music, physical education, the the band chorus, the regular music classes are rotated through. So every student will have three UA classes each term. And at the, and each term, those will change with the exception of PE. Students will have PE across the entire school year.
So is it, I know, going back a little bit, it used to be, if you wanted to do band, orchestra, or chorus, you did that instead of general music? Does this go back to that? Or does this supplement general music?
So it'll, it should supplement general music. So we're looking at students either being built, built into the actual schedule, and some students will have it during win block to make sure that everybody gets what they need. And so we added it to the Unified Arts, because we found that if students during what had been that sort of extension block, students were doing a lot of different things during that time, and students were sort of feeling, well, if my class is doing this, then I'm missing out. And I'm not necessarily wanting to go to orchestra or band, but I really do like orchestra and band. And, you know, in the music teacher was part of the scheduling committee. So we got a lot of feedback through that. We actually had two Unified Arts teachers on the scheduling committee to talk about what does that look like, and how does that make sense, and how do we best meet all of the student needs and wants?
And so a student who is in need of some of that individualized attention will still be able to do those additional arts classes and and get the intervention in and not have that be compromised. That's fantastic.
So one of the ways that we're sort of looking at this is if the period one long block is assigned to math, period two is assigned to English, such and so forth, as it rotates through, everybody will get a long block. So every class will be able to say, okay, if it's period one science, what we will do is we will, we are able to group and regroup students based on that. But there are four core content areas, and there are five blocks in the schedule, which provides us that additional time where students can get some of that more enrichment.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Again, Heather, this has been agreed with the union?
So yes, we we did a quick turnaround. I am really thankful for the collaboration, honestly, with the MEA. We have worked. I think we've all had the same goal, the same target, the same want. And even up to the 11th hour, we were able to, you know, put forth in MOA. put forth an MOA that I think everybody really feels good about. And I do, I'm very thankful for the hard work of the MEA in their partnership and collaboration to make this work. Now, this, this actually is important because the MOA will need to be signed before the school year begins. We had, we were meeting pretty late into yesterday with the union, and I, I believe there's agreement on the verbiage. So it wasn't on the agenda for tonight, but what we can do is talk after today. You know, I know there's not another meeting planned in August, but it's important to get that signed so that we have universal agreement between the union and administration. But I have to commend the groups. They worked very, very collaboratively. It was a pleasure to engage with this process. Every single person at the table had a unified goal. And, and really, kudos to the MEA presidents, to Heather and her team, and all of the educators who were on her committee. Really, it was nice to be in a boat, all rowing in the same direction there, which was good. So I'll reach out to you, if that's okay, after today about getting that signed.
And it, it has, it mirrors everything in our contract. As Heather said, it follows the pieces that we've all agreed to. So there's nothing different about it in particular, so.
Just another comment. It seems to me that with the high school changing schedule, this change, my feeling is that it'll prepare the students well for the transition to high school with the, the rotating of the classes, so you don't have the same thing at the same time every day, and the varying lengths of the blocks. I think it'll make that transition a little easier because the schedules will build upon each other instead of being so different.
It's a great opportunity for all of those instructional practices that we talked about, project-based learning, all of that exploration. You know, for example, sometimes you read a passage, and you start to fill out the graphic organizer, and the class is over. Well, sometimes now you get to take it to that next piece and actually engage into the writing process. Well, the ideas are still fresh. Or if you're a science teacher conducting a lab-based experiment, you get the rules down around how to handle the materials and resources. You start to get your lab set up, you start to engage, and you have to stop. It gives just that little bit of extra time to come full circle and to group and regroup students and, you know, creating those small collaborative groups, which, again, teaches you all of those life skills of working together in partnerships. Well, and something that both the high school committee and the, and the middle school committee agreed to was to continue to meet this year. So it's great. I mean, everything always sounds great at the outset, quite honestly. And then you have to live through that schedule. The, the students have to give feedback, the staff have to give feedback. So both committees are staying open for another year to say, is this exactly how we wanted to work? Are we, are we pleased with what we're getting? With a goal of really keeping an open mind and being ready to come back together if for some reason something's not working. So I anticipate, you know, hearing more from both, from both buildings about their new schedules as this year takes shape.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will turn into the handbook revisions. And I'll start with Middleborough High School. Assistant Principal Andy Deitzel is here tonight, along with Principal Bernigan and Assistant Principal Jeff Sylvia, to highlight what, you know, every year the handbooks are reviewed. But these gentlemen are here tonight to walk us through these changes and revisions that they've been working on since spring. It sounds like we're queuing up their PowerPoint. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I, I know that the introduction has already been done, but I'd like to welcome Mr. Jeffrey Sylvia to the Middleborough High School team, the Board of Public Schools team. We're very excited to have him on board. And so far, it's been a seamless transition, so, so welcome, Jeff. We are very pleased to meet with you this evening to present to you the proposed edits for our next year's handbook. And I'd like to begin by, with the process that we went through this year. It began in earnest in May of the last school year by sending out Google questionnaires to community stakeholders, including students, parents, guardians, faculty, and staff, to, to garner any feedback whatsoever that they had on the current state of our handbook, comments, questions, concerns, offering an opportunity for them to have a voice. Specific requests for updates and edits were requested of all department leaders and co-curricular advisors also in May. And then, once we got that feedback, the MHS leadership team reviewed the data and developed and proposed edits for the years, next year's student handbook. And then, and an added layer, which we found extraordinarily helpful, was that select sections of the student handbook were reviewed by our district council, Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller. In way of general edits, we corrected some typos that we came upon, changed some dates, and updated staff contact information, which actually was one of the pieces of feedback that a parent had, had offered. It's a really very helpful one-stop shop for all, all administrators and department leaders with phone contact and email contact, just to save that extra step of logging online and figuring it out through the, the district website. Two, we reorganized parts of the book and shifted their locations in the book. We really tried to make an emphasis on the, the more student, the necessities, the nuts and the bolts of what they have to know right off the bat. And we shifted some ancillary documents to the rear of the document. We also updated the BMI entry to reflect policy change per school nurse Jen Guarinato. We published our new academic schedule and bell schedule, which is a major shift for Middleborough High School. And we also added, oh, excuse me, I already got to that point. But that, that change in our, in our daily life caused a lot of other changes in the handbook that I'll enumerate as we go through the edits. Our attendance policy needed to be edited because the number of times our classes meet changes drastically. Therefore, a student could now be in jeopardy of losing credit in a course when they register 13 or more unexcused absences in a class. For a 10-credit class, they could, there could be a jeopardy of losing credit if they register 10 or more unexcused absences for a 5-credit class. And if they accrue more than seven unexcused absences in a 2.5-credit class, they could be subject to credit loss. But I also, as I say, those, those loss in a negative form as a, as a penalty for absenteeism, for unexcused absences, I would love to remind the community that we have a comprehensive attendance buyback program where students can be rewarded for increased attendance and better attendance. So we do have that fail-safe in place for those students and families that, that life gets in the way, things happen. I, I think that you're gonna be hard to find a more collaborative high school team to try to work with families through those tough times. But following Desi's guidance, there's got to be some penalty in place for students who are truant and do not attend regularly. Next would be the discipline procedure edits. We deleted our longstanding grid of offenses and possible consequences. And we replaced that grid with a section of different tiers of infractions with possible consequences. We found that that is in line with some very high-performing districts in the state of Massachusetts, as well as it's very much more user-friendly and emphasize our commitment to progressive discipline. We added a special note regarding the order of operations. Feedback from our staff, which was very, very important. They found that oftentimes, when there are perceived issues in the classroom, oftentimes, students and their parents or guardians circumvent the, the teacher. They, they go around the department head or a guidance counselor, and they go directly to an administrator or directly to the, to the head of the class, so to speak. And we really, we love to work with our, our community partners, but we also want them to respect kind of the, not the chain of command, but the flow of things I would like to, to work at. If there's a perceived issue in a classroom setting, who better to reach out to than the classroom teacher? All right? And, and then if there's no satisfaction there, then it would go to the next step, which would be a department head, and so forth and so on. So we're really asking the school community to help us with that and, and kind of adhere to that chain of communication to go forward. We added a special note on the use of artificial intelligence as a qualifier for cheating or plagiarism. If you've, if you've been, you know, aware of the dramatic and recent change in technology and student use of technology and the power of that technology, we are really gonna make a concerted effort to, to make sure that students understand the importance of presenting authentic work, representative of what they know or how their growth toward learning or achieving goals. And use of AI, while it may have merit and application, it could be a qualifier for cheating or plagiarism, depending on its use and the expectations set forth by the, the classroom teacher. We also altered our cell phone policy to require students to turn their devices off or put them on silent mode, but put them away from their person, off the desk, out of the pocket, and in a bag, in, in some other receptacle that is off of their person to, to limit the, the urge for the student to engage in those distracting behaviors. We will never, ever tell a student that they can't reach out to a parent if there is a concern. We will always keep those, those lines of communication open. But we really need to, during that class time, consider that sacred time where the focus needs to be on teaching and learning. And we've found, as you can imagine, that cell phones can create a dramatic interruption to that learning process. The students may use their devices before school, in between classes, lunch, and after school. We did add blankets to our dress code. It, it does foster students wanting to curl up and take a nap. So we want to really get away from that type of behavior. As you can tell, we keep our school on the cooler side. And so we just really ask people to come prepared for that, that degree. And if anybody were to have any issues and not be prepared, we will work with families and we will work with students. However, we're asking that the blankets stay home during the school day. Yes, it is cold in here, I know. We reworked the suspension sections of our handbook, the alternative to suspension, notice of suspension, short and long-term suspension, suspension appeals, and so forth and so on, with verbiage specifically provided to us by Justin Gomes Esquire from Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller to make sure that we are completely in, in line with, with state and federal statutes, expectations on how we are to discipline and, and deal with families through that difficult, sometimes, sometimes difficult process. District policy update, also fruit from working with, with Mr. Gomes. He noted that there were sadly some differences between the district policy regarding bullying, harassment, sexual harassment, and Title IX that had not yet found their way in the Middleborough High School handbook. So we made sure to make all of those updates in this version. Our school counseling department did a tremendous amount of work this school year with all the changes. One of the major changes is changing our GPA scale to be in line with higher education practices. Oftentimes, we would, we would find when working with colleges and universities that our GPA scale, they would need to do on their end some, some factoring and some transitioning of numbers. And it, the feedback that we got is that was cumbersome, that was in that a set that they would really like us to remedy on our end, and now we're doing so. And so kudos to the school counseling department for putting a lot of work into these revisions. We had previously worked on a 4.0 scale, but we now work on a 5.33 scale, where the value of quality points varies depending on the level of classes, college prep, honors, and AP. Raising the bar, we, we raised the designation of an honor roll student status from having a B- average to a B. So students now must have a B or better to earn that, that designation. We also raised the distinction of graduating with honors from a 3.3 GPA to a 3.5 GPA. We reformatted the graduation requirement section to reflect updates and eliminate redundancy. In another clarifying move, we took the dual enrollment slash early college section, and we really tried to better define the difference between the two very different programs that we offer at the high school. Our new director of alternative pathways, Lacy Foley, asked to, to update the futures academy entry into the handbook, which we did. And a further effort by our school counseling department, they created a services by year, I'm sorry, they created a services calendar, and we swapped that out with the previous installment, which was services by year. We're almost there. Lastly, the co-curricular offerings in honor societies also got a bit of a facelift. We raised the standard for National Honor Society entrance from 3.85 to 3.90. Added a clarifier to the English Honor Society, again, really focusing on the use of AI and, and academic integrity. So the English department, to their credit, wanted to really better define what would warrant revocation of the status of, of English Honor Society. And again, that would be in line with cheating and plagiarism and the use of, of AI, should it be inappropriate use. Happy to announce that we're adding a theater honor society called the International Thespian Society to the number of honor societies that we offer. But as I say that, I'm also sad to note that we are temporarily going to delete jazz band as an offering. Spoke with Mr. Pittsley this evening, and, and in his role, he is always working to bolster numbers, but there's no hiding the fact that COVID really hit the fine arts and hit band in particular, among other fine arts areas. But we're so happy to report that grade four, five, and six, we're seeing a boom, a resurgence of interest in the arts in that fashion, which is fantastic. So I, I truly intend in three or four years' time to sit before you and ask that we add that back to our offering. So we're gonna temporarily delete that. Lastly, athletic handbook. General South Shore League updates were entered by Mr. Sylvia. The addition of varsity majorettes and JV cheerleading was also added to the list of athletic offerings and an articulation about the addition of awards nights and banquets to clarify how teams are celebrated at the end of each season. So with that being said, that's a lot. But I, we welcome any comments, questions, or concerns that the committee may have about what we just presented.
I get the old way with, when somebody turned in an essay and stuff like that. How with AI technology do we determine if something's made with AI technology?
To be quite candid, Mr. Chairman, it's very, very difficult.
Okay.
We, we have and had fail safes where we would have a program that if something looked fishy or did not seem like the students' work, we would submit it into the, AI is so sophisticated that it will not register on that type of technology. So the fail safes have not yet caught up to the advancements necessary to kind of catch the use of AI. This is where we really need our community partners and our, our, our school members to, to really dial in and say, this is important to put forward your authentic work so we're able to gauge your progress, where you're really at, not where a machine or artificial intelligence is. But that's the best offer I can muster right now.
No, I, I just wondered. I mean, I knew, I've seen, like, Turn It In. That was a program that people were using for a long time, and I probably still use. And all, all that does is, if it's out on the web someplace, you, you're finding it and matching it up and explaining the matching, right?
Yeah.
No, so that was, thank you. I mean, obviously, that's a new one I've never seen before, and it's just added this year. Do other members have questions?
Just to build off of what you said, though, I know it's a big thing out there in the, the colleges as well. So it may be worth tapping into, you know, working with some of those colleges that we already partner with for some of those students to get some recommendations because I know it's very high out there in the, the priorities of college classroom as well to kind of monitor and figure out how to manage AI use.
What I can tell you is this came up during the summer conference with MAS. This is something that superintendents are paying attention to across the state. It's also so new that most communities don't really have any policies in place. So when policy committee gets together, this would be an excellent thing to discuss. I don't have a model, there is no model policy. That was something we learned this summer. And I think just talking about products like ChatGPT and, and similar artificial intelligence is important because it used to be that you could examine a passage of text to determine, and now it's virtually undetectable. So, and, and it can range. It's not just a question or a topic. You could, it could literally spit out a 10-page paper, and it would be very, very hard for an educator to know. So I anticipate continuing working with the high school on this particular matter, but I would echo Mr. Deitzel and, you know, urge family cooperation with us about this technology that seems to be ahead of the curve.
The other question I have is about the GPA scale. In changing the GPA scale from 4 to 5.33, when that was changed, did that alter class standings currently?
So I'll take that one. So it actually, we went back and made everything retroactive for all of the grades so that would not impact any grade at all. Actually, it's impacting them in a positive space. What we're finding is, is the fact that we were using an unweighted GPA, and with the graded GPA. and the graded, excuse me, the weighted GPA was really just based for rank. What we were finding was is that in the trends, the fact that colleges only want to see the weighted GPA, but we were still only offering an unweighted. So what we did is that we've completely revamped every aspect of the transcript process of really the weighting that we've done as well in terms of all of our courses. And what we're also going to be seeing is a very updated GPA for the class of 2024. In the old GPAs, the fact that every single grade of every term was presented, that is not a practice that is done any longer. And through the research we've done through college partners, through partners, through all of the South Shore schools as well, we're finding that everyone was moving away from that and really having just the bottom line, what the final grade is. Because really, that's what the universities are looking for, not the story of getting to the end grade, but actually the end grade. So it definitely doesn't have any impact in terms of really what we're sending to a college. But what it does do is it really then focuses on really the end of the course rather than all the things in the middle, which really I think for our students is going to be a lot better because we have a lot of students who look at that transcript. And if they have one grade in quarter three in grade 10, that really was not really up to snuff for them, it really becomes something the fact that they will really be upset over. So to really just show that final grade. So you're going to start to see a lot more of this coming out, especially as our seniors are going through college bootcamp. I know that they've started to see some of that, especially as we're finally updating that. The final edits of the transcript are being done now. So we start to send them off to universities in the late fall, the fact that they'll be the updated one. So so everything has been retroactively practiced, so it's going to actually benefit the class of 2024 and beyond.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, high school.
Thank you.
With that, I'll invite the middle school team back up to go through the handbook updates and revisions for this for this student handbook.
Okay, so thank you for having us back to talk about our handbook updates. So overall, what we are intending to do was we did just really brief minor edits, updates for this current school year. It is our intent to actually dig much deeper and greater depth over the 2324 school year at our handbook. I I think over this past year, we were not able to dedicate all the time and we want to make sure that we actually do a robust process to look at that. So overall, we just updated for some consistent formatting in terms of same font size, same fonts, just, you know, basics. And then just a few specific updates. About students are unable to exit the school campus and return for the late bus. We found that there may have been a student or two who walked Cumberland Farms to get a treat and tried to come back and get on the late bus. And, you know, if we are moving students in the ways that they need to be, they they need to be here with us. Late bus is for a specific purpose. And so we just wanted to make it really clear that students were unable to do that. I think, given just some of the discussions that have happened around Nichols over the past year, we wanted to make it really explicit that behaviors such as throwing food can result in progressive discipline. And then just a overall, the electronic devices. TikTok's a thing in middle school and we just wanted to make it really clear. Pictures, videos, any of the things you're doing, even for fun purposes, not just for, you know, more of a, you know, malfeasance sort of piece, will may result in disciplining, including the loss of privileges. Because if we have students with no picture videos and kids are trying to sneak a TikTok in the hallway, you could be capturing kids. And so we really want those phones away. Another thing is to really be aware that parents and guardians shouldn't be texting with students throughout their day. It is the expectation of the middle school that cellphones are often put away when students enter the building. And student dismissals really need to go through the appropriate channels, such as reaching out to the front office or to the school nurse. And, you know, it's it's concerning when a child is being dismissed of, oh, my child doesn't feel good. I'm here to get them. And the nurse is unaware of what's happening. So just for more of a safety piece.
So on page thirteen, we revised the wordage from being a boy or girl to their gender to be more inclusive. And health services, we wanted to add that parents, please be aware, parents and guardians should not be texting. So to rephrase again what Ms. Tucker just spoke to. But students are not going to be permitted to dismiss as a result of a text. And also, another thing that we started to notice was any authorized use of the elevator may result in progressive discipline. Our first course would be to redirect the children and remind them that the elevator is only for the, you know, sometimes we have a student with crutches for whatever reason. They can bring a buddy to help them with their bag, but they don't need to bring five. And that's kind of what we were noticing towards the end of the school year. It seemed to be quite a few children trying to join that. We changed the wordage from on page twenty six from blackboard to class tag to indicate the current platform we're using. And on the academics page, it's updated from teachers don't set policy, so it's going to be procedure. So the teacher procedures and the appendix we updates on discipline.
Let me think we did it. Sorry. All right. And that is, that is what we did. Just a few really brief. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will turn to the elementary level. With us tonight is Principal Derek Thompson, Principal Lisa White and Assistant Principal Josh Steyer, who like Assistant Principal Sylvia is also new in his position. So welcome and walk us through your revisions.
Good evening, Chairman Yang, Superintendent Lyons, school committee members. Like to welcome Josh to his first time at the table as the MKG assistant principal. We're very lucky to have him as a Middleborough kid, as I so fondly refer to him as. We did the same thing as the middle school. We do intend this year to take a very in-depth look at our handbook, do a little bit better of aligning it. But so we made some minor edits, correcting dates and staffing information and such. We, you'll notice there isn't a table of contents yet because we always like to wait till the end. Format can become a nightmare. So we want to wait till this gets approved and we'll put our table of contents in later. The page with strategic strategic objectives has been removed. As Superintendent Lyons said, that the current one is being worked on. And once that is presented and accepted, then that will be added to our plan. Our staff directory is removed. We have so many changes so frequently. So to keep up with it, it's a little easier to put it on our website and make, it's much easier for parents to access. We've taken out our acceptance, excuse me, our acceptable use policy because we have that sent home separately to families each year. So we did take that out of the handbook. Just the signature page, I'm sorry. We changed some location of some of the items that we have in our handbook. So procedure for suspension and with students with disability is now located in the mass general law section. Procedure for expulsion of students is now also in the mass general law section. Procedure of recording, recording suspensions and discipline, procedures for students with special education services. When I was looking at it, it was there twice. So once it has been removed and now put in the mass general law section. We did add, there was an update in the law with thirty seven H three quarter B. So that was added as well as part of our suspension section. So some information that was changed in the general and information section. We changed the way that the cancel school, the way it was worded, we amended it. And just that we don't, we use class tag, the way we communicate with families on cancellations has been updated. Our homeschool communication is not blackboard any longer, so we use class tags. So that verbiage was changed to match what the district is currently using for our communication. So we had our several pages describing all of our curriculum. It's not where it goes in a handbook. It actually goes on our curriculum page as part of our district plan. So that we removed that and that will be put on our curriculum, as with Dr. Markleitis working with her team, to have that put on the district curriculum page. Student expectations, we found in elementary school, this has been a little bit of an ongoing fun activity with hats. With elementary school, we do have students with sensory needs. We do have students that have bad haircuts that for a reason want to wear a hat. And with a lot of our sensory kids or with that happening, we don't want to single kids out. So we met as a team and we took that, took the hat out. So students are able to, with circumstances, be able to wear a hat in school. And that is all. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. And so with that, where does that leave me? I think I need my slide deck back up. I have just a brief update on the pool, the elementary complex pool roof. I wanted to bring the community up to speed. The construction is still underway. It was anticipated to be completed yesterday, but not terribly surprisingly. The weather was a factor because you can't replace the roof in the rain. So I just, if you could just get this TV on, I can't see the slides here down that way. But it, the demolition and construction did start on July twenty first and it's very nearly complete. I just want them to turn that on so you guys can see the pictures because you'll, I had some good, this TV down here. You see this screen? The before and after pictures really kind of tell the whole story as to what was going on with the roof. If you recall, this was a roof that did need repair, but we experienced inclement weather. And basically, it's a double layer roof and part, the the top layer of the roof was starting to bubble. And so it really was a necessary repair. As I said, it is, the project is nearly complete. There will also have to be a period of cleanup. What, because it's a roof, debris tends to, you know, go places with the wind. We don't want it to go, including into nearby residents' yards. There's also a lot of trash accumulated from a project of this magnitude. So I know the dumpsters have already been changed out and emptied out, but they're going to need to do that again. I'll certainly work with Director of Facilities, Jim Hutchinson, just to make sure that once the project is closed, that we're making sure we're we're going around to anywhere the wind may have taken debris and making sure that that area is, you know, safe for children, clean and ready for open. I don't anticipate any delays in having this be completely wrapped up before school begins. And then once we get this, once we get this up, I'll be able to show you. I can show you folks at home that some of the pre-construction photos, you can really see the sort of first layer caving. I mean, a roof is flat, right? And this is not. So this is what we were dealing with and, you know, Director Hutchinson and his team, they have not hesitated. He's been up there on days that make me very worried, you know, shoring it up. He's great about calling companies. I I mean, I've said it before and I'll never stop saying it. We're so tremendously lucky to have his expertise and knowledge base. But he's able to get up there and when this happened, he's able to get up there and shore up the roof temporarily because it's not like you just replace a roof because you have it in your wallet and you're ready to spend. So there's always a process. There's always a lag. So those were some of the pre-construction photos. And then I'll flip, just in the interest of time, I'll flip into these post-construction photos. It is, I believe it is watertight, but it's, all the finished pieces are not quite there. But as you can see, it now looks nice and flat, which is what we want to be seeing in terms of the construction. So with that, Director Hickey, I will turn it over to you.
I I just want to comment because the pre-construction photos look very alarming. We went out to bid on this project in early December and had the contractor lined up. And then on December twenty third, there was a significant windstorm that got in under the rubber roof and it flapped around. And so that's not the roof that we would normally have had and normally have had replaced. That was the roof that had been damaged by the storm and then temporarily put together again by Mr. Hutchinson and his crew. And again, we're thankful for the work he does. So I just didn't want anybody to think that last summer, that's what the roof looked like. Or last October, that's what the roof looked like. If that's what it normally looked like, we would have replaced it much sooner. So this, these dramatic photos were, yes, it definitely needed to be replaced. And this just looks really bad and we never would have left it like that. We were fortunate that we were already replacing it when that storm happened.
Well, and just to clarify, it is a double roof. So it's not like the inside looked that way. Yes, of course, it warrants repair, but it's important to understand the layer is double. So happily, we are now past that point in time. If you have any questions about this project, let me know. Otherwise, we'll proceed with our new roof at the elementary complex over the pool. And actually, that completes my report. Oh, sorry. In terms of the the timing, is the hope that it'll still be done before students are in the building if the weather plays nice in the next week and a half? I mean, so at this point, though, I don't know how much more the weather's going to be a factor. I think the weather was a factor a few weeks ago when it rained continually all summer long. So I I don't believe that the weather is a factor now. It just set the whole deadline back. So they're really on the finished pieces of the project. I just don't know. It was supposed to be, I think the original day was yesterday as it's targeted completion. But it could be tomorrow. It could be in the next couple of days. But in any event, it will definitely be before students are there. It'll be before staff are back as well. So the whole check the parking lot for nails thing that was always fun after replacing a roof anywhere else? Sure, definitely. No nails? Do it? That's nice. Okay. Now that completes my report for this evening.
Then I'm going to do the evaluation. I'm going to hand out, I have some handouts for people. That people should know, number one, this is how we've done the process in the past. Number two, is there ends no comment from the audience because this is a personnel matter between the school committee and, excuse me, and the superintendent. These were done by five members of the school committee. We didn't have six at the time. One member has since left. And these were all completed by the end of March because they're completed prior to April election and April election this year was the first. So with that, one of the things, superintendents, this evaluation is an evaluation from the state that every superintendent is evaluated in the same way. Their evaluation are based on two steps. The first step is goals and the second step is performance on standards. As you can imagine, different school committees do the evaluation at different times primarily because of when members of the school committee are elected. So for example, in a lot of cities like Taunton and Brockton, the school committee members are elected in November or October. So therefore, it covers the whole year as opposed to we do March when it changes. So I'm going to ask you to look backwards because in some way that's easier. So it's, the ratings are based on performance standard. The first performance standard for superintendent is professional cul- culture. The first performance standard for superintendent is professional culture. In that performance standard, the superintendent was rated at proficient. In all the standards, the superintendent was rated proficient from one through four. In each of the standards, there's a subsection. There's usually anywhere from six to seven, sometimes four questions, and then an overall rating. These are based on essentially what the majority of members chose. Okay? I'll go to comments afterwards, but I just want to go over the two sections. The second section is the superintendent's performance goals. The superintendent essentially had goals in four areas. And there was the continuous improvement, which is under student learning. It was keep the district moving forward. This year's transition into leadership by working with district leadership to ensure that a meaningful progress is made. It's her NSET, which is the Superintendent Induction Program. Develop skills and strategy development, data analysis and instructional leadership by completing the first year of NSET. Effective entry and direction setting. The district's most critical needs, the district's strategizing goals that will address the most effective and the measures that will be used to assess. And under system goals, develop and improve systems to ensure ongoing process and procedure, management of HR issues, effective communication with families and continuity of service to students on a year-round basis. I would note that in all the areas, she's listed as significant progress. I would say in some of the areas, for example, the first year of NSET, she's met that goal. But it's, remember, it's around the time that we're doing it. So that's why in some places it's not met as significant progress. And so it's based on the timing pattern. And then to the first two pages, the second page is the overall evaluation, the summative evaluation report on the superintendent. And again, under all the areas, she was listed as proficient. So that's that. And the same applies at the beginning for the goals. So those are the structural areas of those pieces. Does that make sense to everybody? I know two people are new and this is the first time that they see it. Anyone have any questions about that?
I have a question. I guess I was confused when conducting this entire thing because it says rate overall summative performance. So why wasn't that used as the factor for the entire performance given? Like at the end of the whole entire review, after you went through every sections, it was like, give, check off unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient exemplary.
Right. If you look above, it says based on step one and two.
Right. So why wasn't that overall, whatever was marked, used as part of the?
It would be if, so again, it's how you take.
You just told, you told me earlier that it was those four items.
Right. So the four category areas pertain to step number two. Okay? And step number two in each of those standard leaderships, she comes up as proficient. Okay? In step number one, it's based on the progress of the notes. If you, if you go through the training pieces, one of the things it talks about is if a superintendent is between some and exceeded, they're in a, they're doing their goals. Okay? The needs improvement comes in and did not meet. And the needs improvement comes in under unsatisfactory or needs improvement. So if a superintendent, under the standard goals, got proficient and met the progress, then inherently they're proficient.
But I guess we'll agree, disagree on that. Because I feel like the overall end, whatever the final thing that somebody marks, that should be taken into account.
But you're supposed to take, again, you're not supposed to do that part until you've done the others.
Right.
And that's how, what drives the first part.
Right. But I'm saying overall, I think when you're doing a cumulative review, I think that incorporates everything.
I would agree. But like I said, if you have a superintendent who meets in the progress areas and goals and is outlined in progress and is outlined in proficient on the standards, then by the rules of this, they're proficient or better. By the rules that are set up when you take the course and the training.
Okay. And I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
I guess this is just for me going forward. I'm not on the evaluation committee. Can we make the goals more performance-based? I mean, the first, there are a couple on here, that new superintendent induction program and the entry plan. I feel like those are more conditions of the job versus being what we should be evaluating on.
So generally speaking, all those things are included in our first year superintendent's evaluation. These were the same, these were essentially the same pieces. It's different than we included in Brian's evaluation. And in, so I haven't, I've done other superintendents' evaluations. It started with Brian for this particular piece.
Are you saying every district is doing it this way or is it just how it's done in Middleborough?
It's done in Middleborough and I think most districts will include those pieces. Because again, when you sit, when you go through the training program, one of the things they talk about is for a new superintendent, there is a piece that is trained for the sort of new superintendent and superintendent evaluations. One of the things they go through is what should really be included on the first evaluation. And this is also part of the NSET program too. I mean, there's conversation with the person who serves as Carolyn's mentor about what goes on the first one and things like that.
And then personally going forward, I feel like there needs to be a more fair way of evaluating this. I don't think majority rules is fair in this. I feel like with each thing given, there should be a point value assigned. And at the end of it, it's added up and then there's a, there's a level of points. And then where you fall, you fall and that's where you're, you get your.
Describe what you mean by the point.
So say exceeds, so there's how many categories here? So exceeds would be five points. Like you would each, each indication would get a point value.
Okay.
So anytime somebody from the committee marks proficient, exceeds, needs improvement, there's a point value assigned to that. So that instead of saying five people did the review and saying that, well, because the majority said it was proficient, but there could have been some things in there that were marked needs improvement, unsatisfactory. I think those need to be taken into account in the overall grading of the review.
Okay. And that's a discussion that we can have moving forward. The only thing I'll say, and I'll say it works both ways, if you will, for the point value, is I have been, there were similar categories. It's different language under the old system, okay? It was, you know, sort of the same categories, but again, if you will, it's a one through five type of thing or one through four. I have seen people just put fours and that offsets in that way too. You know what I mean?
No, I mean, I'm just saying that we can keep the form as is, that there's just a point value aside, assigned to each. So on all of these, you would have a point value assigned. So then when you tally it up for each section and that would be, there would be a cumulative points. And then there would be a ruling scale of where you fall in on the point scale.
Do we have an option on the form or is this the state standard that has to be?
I have to check with how, no, we don't have an option at all on the form. Okay? This is the form that has to be filtered. I understand what Marcy's saying about sort of structuring for point value, for lack of better terms.
I just feel that.
I understand. No, I just said. I don't know, I can find out how that plays out. Or what you can do to play it out differently or can you, can you not, that kind of thing. I would really recommend to members that they attend, that there is multiple workshops that go on between MASC and DOE. They also run workshops, there's obviously workshops through the induction program and work through the new person program. And there's workshops through the, like, first year, first member school committee and the school committee conference. But there is also, MASC runs luncheon workshops. That, you know, you can go on Zoom and be a part of that too and have a better understanding of that. So I would recommend that to people too. Okay? Do you have other questions, Marcy?
Yeah, that's all my questions.
Okay. So I think overall for a first-year superintendent, the superintendent did a nice job. It's marked as proficient. The, these are all pieces that I tried to make sure that everybody who had points to make, made them and put it out there. And so that's. Any other questions?
I guess my, my only question is the, the performance goals that were outlined, you know, they're kind of summarized here.
Yeah.
Are those spelled out in greater detail?
Yeah.
For review when evaluating the performance?
Right. And so what happens is essentially they're placed in the form as to what, like where the goals are and what those goals would be. You'll also, you're on the evaluation committee with me. So we will set the goals and have them probably for September, October, meaning when we meet the superintendent and establish those goals. And we bring them to the committee to explain what the goals are and they vote on them. So the committee sees them on multiple occasions.
Okay.
Right.
And just also, so superintendent lines has them in
Absolutely.
longer format to know what the expectations are.
Right. And you'll see a lot of times that she may highlight in the Friday Flash what she was doing around her, like if there was a piece that was related to a goal.
Okay.
Okay? Other questions? Makes sense? Okay. Do you have anything you want to say?
No, I have to say.
Then with that, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the high school building project. We have not had any meetings since our last one. We are expecting one shortly and that should be the end of the, that should be the very end of the high school building committee. So that's good. I also put down MASC, MAS S Annual Conference again. Chair wants to take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Very second. Members, this consent agenda include minutes, a donation from Ohio Pile and fundraisers for the student council, Mary Kay Good PTA and the Berkland Playground Committee. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Anything else before we adjourn?
I just want to think along the lines of a building committee. Is there any interest, need or desire to have a, like a permanent building committee to oversee the things like the repair of the pool roof? The, I mean, everything's going to need to be repaired, maintenance and repairs, things like that?
We can talk about that. I mean, one of the pieces that's, the, the high school building committee has a specific function and was town meeting approved for a specific function. My guess is if we're going to form something like that, we have to go through town meeting and establish it that way. I would also say probably, and you could, you would probably know better than me, if we were going to do that, it would probably make more sense to do it townwide.
I know that's a capital improvement.
Right. And that's the other question I was going to have for you. Is how much does that fall into the capital improvement?
Yeah. I honestly, I just came into my mind as we were going through this and I was wondering if there's an interest in something like that.
I'm sure we can have a conversation with the town manager and see where he wants to go from there.
I talked to Hutch first.
Yeah.
See what he thinks.
Is there a subcommittee that it sort of falls?
There is a facility subcommittee. And, but there are pieces.
Yeah. I'd just be curious as to, you know,
I put Alan on it for a reason.
Does it just need a little bit more formalness or is that enough to kind of?
Like I said, it just came to me right now. So I was just wondering if that was a conversation.
One of the things that Director Hutchinson and I, and actually Director Hickey and I have also talked about, one of the things we engaged in was long-range planning from a facility standpoint this year. So we put together, really Director Hickey and Director Hutchinson, put together a, you know, long-term, not just for capital planning, but really looking at our facility's direction. One of the things you and I had talked about at a, at a different meeting was the elementary complex. So one of the things I'd already been thinking about for my goal for this year was possibly convening a committee to start talking about the elementary schools, the increasing enrollment, the capacity issues that we're seeing, which kind of dovetails, you know, facilities and more. But I'd be happy to talk with, with Jim about this because there's the first issue of the maintenance of this beautiful building and facility. But there's many more pieces from a facility standpoint we need to manage. And it would make sense to engage in some regular long-range planning so that we have an idea of, we're going to kind of methodically go down the list and address things. Because something like, for example, a new elementary complex or a new elementary building is many, many years in the making. You have to start it somewhere. So I was planning to engage that work starting this year. So it's kind of funny that you were thinking about it at the same time. So more to come on that. I'll certainly keep that in mind as I'm developing goals as well.
I would also say too that, I mean, you served on it too for a while. I've been there since the beginning. But that's a pretty sizable committee. That's not usually the size of committees when we're.
No, I wouldn't recommend a committee of that size as a permanent building committee for any.
And I think to their credit too, there are several people on that committee. George Randall's the one that comes to mind for me, who essentially gave up a lot of opportunity for business for the high school to make sure that things were run well. And that time and time again, George would point out things that were very helpful. And the same with Rob DeRosa. These were guys who, you know, could have built, bid on jobs as they have in the past, but didn't because they wanted to make sure the high school was great. So it's those pieces. I think that's a really unique committee that we have because of, the MSBA does a really nice job of how it structures it and how it puts who it wants on there. So I think that's pretty good. I mean, we've, we had an architect all along who was a member of the committee from the beginning, even before we hired an architectural firm. And she was fantastic in being able to look at who provided vision and ideas for the community. So we're happy. Any other questions before I finish? With that, Chair wants to take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Go here second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We'll see you September 7th. Thank you, everybody. Bye.